Stand by for countdown.
Hey Nicole.
Hey Nicole. Hey Nicole, where's our excellence in public service? I need something.
It's on the left side if you want that.
Yep.
Thirty seconds out. Twenty seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning Commissioners and welcome to the Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, the Director of Communications. So to start off Commissioners, we'd like to talk about the Excellence in Public Service Award. You can find it actually on our website, the CedricCounty.org website. In collaboration with the City of Wichita and Wichita Public Schools, Cedric County is encouraging people to nominate public service employees for the annual Excellence in Public Service Award, sponsored by the DeVore Foundation and KSN. In its 34th year, the award recognizes employees in these three organizations who exhibit the highest standard of service. Nominate someone within the county who goes above and beyond the call of duty and demonstrates leadership in the community. The winners will receive a $2,500 reward and be honored at the reception in May. You have until 5:00 PM Friday, March 4th, so that's this week, to nominate someone you know. We've posted the application on E-line and on the Cedric County website. Commissioners, we're happy to also announce, several weeks ago, we talked to you about an initiative to continue to promote healthy living as far as the COVID-19 booster, as well as testing. And so this week, actually this Friday, another important date for us, we will roll out the Wichita Transit Cedric County Health Department COVID-19 Initiative. You will begin to see Wichita Transit buses with the "Rap Get Your Booster" on the side of Wichita Transit buses. You will also see the logo "Stay Strong Against COVID-19." We've got a picture here. So the wrap will actually be on the lower portion of the bus, and then in the windows, you'll also have these pictures depicting folks from our campaigns. In addition to the outside of the bus, we've also got communication marketing materials on the inside of the bus, so the people who are riding those will also be able to see information, as well as phone numbers and website information for them to log on for their booster, as well as COVID vaccine. With that, Commissioners, let's take a look at today's agenda. Under appointments, you've got two items, a resolution appointing Diane Gerstad to the District One Citizens Advisory Board, a resolution appointing Joseph Dozier to the District One Citizens Advisory Board as well. Under new business Commissioners, you will set the public hearing for the adoption of the Cedric County Sanitary Code. Item E, you will set the public hearing for the adoption of the Cedric County Wastewater Code. Item F, resolution creating a nuisance abatement code in the unincorporated area of Cedric County. You will have an update from Sheena Smuts, Chief Human Resources Officer, on the COVID-19 vaccine mandate for comm care and health department employees. And then Item H is a report of the Boards and Bids and Contracts, regular meeting from February 24th. And with that, Chairman, I turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you, Akeem. I appreciate it. A couple of things before I start the meeting. You'll note that Commissioner Howell is not on the bench at this time. He is in the building. He is providing testimony in Topeka currently. As soon as he's completed with that testimony, he'll join us. If he has not joined us by the time we go into new business, we will take a short break so that he can join us as we go into new business. So I just wanted to do a little housekeeping there. Also, I haven't had a chance to talk to all the Commissioners yet, so I'll give them an opportunity to speak when I'm finished. But I'd like to make a statement before we begin the meeting today. One week ago, we saw the invasion of Putin's army into Ukraine, which is a continuation of Russia's aggression towards the Ukrainian independence. In 1991, Ukraine gained its independence with 90% support from its people. Ukraine has been under the threat of Russia for its century. In 1986, we saw the resilience of the Ukrainian people in the face of suffering when Chernobyl Nuclear Plant melted down because of poorly designed nuclear reactor. Again, in 2014, Putin annexed Crimea, which is a region of Ukraine. And today, he continues to attack the independence and the naught democracy of the Ukrainian people. In America, we know that freedom is not free, and today, Ukraine is showing the world that truth. People who a week ago were teachers, doctors, restaurant raiders, are now all fighting together to defend their country from Russian aggression. According to the U.S. Senate Census in 2019, there are more than 4,000 Ukrainians in our state. There are an estimated 1,000 Ukrainians who call Cedric County home. I offer my unwavering support to the Ukrainian people and their fight for democracy. I ask that everyone please keep Ukrainian people in your thoughts and prayers and condemn Russia's aggression. Thank you. Do any Commissioners have anything to say before we continue with the meeting? Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you actually taking time to make this statement and support. I know we're Wichita, Kansas, and Cedric County, but the impact around the world, I think it's important that we show support for the Ukrainians and their people and all of Europe, and the world impact that they've had. So thank you for doing this. I fully support your message.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see any other statements at this time. With that, again, we are praying and we wish the Ukrainian people the best. And we'd actually have a flag of the Ukraine here flying from our bench today. With that, I'd like to welcome everyone that's joining us in the audience today, those that are joining us online, and those that are joining us by KPTS. I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Jeff Gannon, Chapel Hill United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Pastor, if you're on the call, we're ready for the prayer.
Okay, let us pray. O God of us all, we give you thanks and praise for the gift, for the beauty of this day that you have made. We pray that you would help us to rejoice and to be glad in it. We thank you and praise you for the gift of prayer, and we stand united with our sisters and brothers in the Ukraine. And we pray, O God, that peace will prevail. Have your way, O God, and do a mighty work within the Ukrainian people to steel their resolve, to give them strength where there's weakness, hope where there is despair. We thank you and praise you for the gift of these public servants who are willing to lead us. We pray for wisdom. We pray for discernment. We pray for prudence, that their actions, their conversations, that everything that they're about today would honor you and bless you, and would serve the common good of this county that we love. Finally, O God, we pray in thanksgiving for this holy day named Ash Wednesday. And for those of us who follow Jesus, may this be a day when we turn to you and are reminded that we are dependent upon you for all that is good, for all that is beautiful, for all that is prudent. So have your way in our lives individually and collectively, we pray. For we offer this prayer in your most holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I thank Pastor Jeff Gannon from the Chapel Hill United Methodist Church for joining us today. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. And Commissioner Howell will join us. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, all the Commissioners did receive one statement via email. That individual is actually in the room today, so for the ones that we received online, I move that we receive and file, and we will also hear from her momentarily. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And now we'll turn it over to public comments. We have Judy Wetzel in the audience would like to speak. Ma'am, if you'll approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Judy Wetzel and lived in Cedric County all my life. I'm here to talk about the safety concerns going on at Cedric County Park. A week ago Saturday, I walk there every day. A week ago Saturday, my car was broken into, and I had nothing in my car at all, no items at all showing. Car windows were up, the car was locked, and it was parked facing 21st Street, so in a very well seen area. Lots of cars around, lots of people. But usually when people go there, they're walking, jogging, you know, whatever, and they leave their cars for an hour or two. So someone obviously watched me walk away, and they broke into it. Cost me $616 to fix the damage to my car. That was done by someone with a Slim Jim. They were trying to steal the car. There was nothing inside the car at all to see. It was something that has irritated me. I went back into the park. You guys have no cameras in the park at all. Last night, I went there about 7:30 to see if you had lights, and there was no lights on in the park at all. It's very dark at that time. Your park stays open until 10:00 PM, so I was there when it wasn't open. When my car was broken into, it was 3:00 on Saturday afternoon, so it was very much a time to be there. It's something that irritated me enough that I'm here today, and I don't do public speaking, but it's something you guys need to be aware of, and you need to take some action, in my opinion. At least cameras in the parking lots, because there's thousands of places to park in that park. It's 400 acres. But if you put them in the parking lots and put signs up, at least people know that their car is being looked at by camera when they do walk away for an hour or two. When I walked there, I walk all the paths, and so it takes from about an hour and a half to two hours, and I was gone about an hour and 40 minutes when that happened. When I got back, I couldn't get my car door to close. They didn't break the window because they wanted the car. So I did report it to the police. I found out you have to report it to the Cedric County Police, and so I did that, too. Reported it to insurance. Going to go pick up the insurance check today. But this is something that you all need to be aware of. I've never felt unsafe there before, and I walked there every day practically for two years. And so it's just something that you all need to be aware of that's happening, and it's kind of scary. But anyway, that's all I have to say. I don't have any high-tech stuff to show you or anything like that. But this person obviously worked a while because the Slim Jim was actually broken off inside my door. So they were at my car for a while, which that means no police officer or somebody came by or anything like that. So I just want to let you know. And also walk at Pawnee Prairie, if you guys could open up those bathrooms, that would really be helpful. Anyway, there you go.
Okay, we do have questions. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Judy, for being here today. I, too, walk Cedric County Park weekly and know exactly how you feel. I have not had my car broken into, but I am really sort of dismayed that this happened at 3:00 in the afternoon.
On a Saturday.
In the exact same parking lot that I park in all the time. So I wonder, Tom, have we ever did any sort of look at adding any cameras? Has this ever come up before to where we could?
No, I'm not aware that it's come up before, Commissioner, regarding the lighting or the camera issue.
Okay, so is that something that we could look into to see what the cost would be?
Sure.
And there's no way, I want to realize, there's no way to look at every parking space there, because you could park anywhere. But in the three main parking lots, that would be really helpful.
Yeah. Well, I'm so sorry that happened to you. Thank you for sharing that with us. And do you walk at a certain time? Maybe we could walk together. I don't know about two hours, but I do do the whole loop.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Judy. I appreciate you being here and sharing that with us.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. Thanks for coming today. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Move to receiving and file, public comments. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of February 9th, 2022.
Thank you. All the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes from February the 9th, 2022, move to approve. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, resolution appointing Diane Gerstad to the District One Citizens' Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoon, County Counselor. We can probably take Items B and C together. They're both appointments to Commissioner Meitzner's Citizens Advisory Board, District One. Item B is the appointment of Diane Gerstad, and Item C is the appointment of Joseph Dozier. I'd add that I had the pleasure of working several years in Topeka with Diane. She was longtime lobbyist for USD 259 and did an excellent job in that role up there, and wasted a lot of time trying to teach me about the legislative process. Anyway, both of the resolutions are in proper form, and I actually approve the resolutions.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased that I had a couple of openings from the start when we put this advisory board together, and it was intentionally left open, so as time would go on, we could fill those spots. And we've only had one resignation from the board due to, we found out that the person did not live within the district. So other than that, this advisory board has been intact and been very, very good and well-rounded board. And Diane will bring, as Mike just gave her resume, she has retired from 259, but she will bring a community-wide knowledge to our board. And also Joseph Dozier, who is not able to be here, he was out of town, but he also will bring a unique perspective of his intelligence to the board. And Joseph was also part of, he was on the board when we did the redistricting a couple of months ago. So Joseph brings a lot of talent as well in his perspective. So with that, thanks for letting me say a few comments, and I'd like to motion that we approve Diane and Joseph to the advisory board.
Thank you, Commissioner Meitzner, and I've known Diane Gerstad for a long time, and it's a great appointment, so I appreciate it. So I'd be happy to second that motion. Any comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And Diane, if you would stand up, we will give you the oath. Karen, thank you.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Cedric County First District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God. I do.
Would you like to say anything?
I just thank you, Commissioner, and I thank Commissioner Meitzner for the appointment. During my retirement, I'm really looking forward to becoming more involved in my community and learning more. I've been involved in Cedric County Extension for the last couple of years, a fabulous resource, I might say, for our community, and also working the elections. So I thank you, Pete, for the appointment, and I'm looking forward to learning more through the advisory board. Thanks.
Again, congratulations. We appreciate it. At this time, Commissioner Howell is testifying at this moment, so we're going to take a small break. We won't leave the room, because I'm not sure when he's going to come back in. But at this point in time, I'm going to recess, and I'll call it back to order here as soon as he comes back, and I can't tell you the time. Thank you.
26th is the bill for Lindsey for our county. How long do you have been recessed? Just a few minutes ago?
Are we ready in the back? Very good, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item D, set the public hearing for the adoption of the Cedric County Sanitary Code.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you, Chris Labrum, Metro Area Building and Construction Department. So the first two items that we have before you are to set public hearings for sanitary codes. These are two codes you've seen a few times in staff meeting now. They are back with full approval from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Their state requirements are that we set a public hearing that we publish three times in the county's paper, which is the Derby Informer, and that then, of course, hold that public hearing. So the first code is, again, the sanitary code. It's in Chapter 14 of our county codes. This is Article 5. The updates, as you probably remember, were very minor to this, mostly administrative to ensure that MABCD was properly defined, and also to align definitions, ensure our definitions are 100% in line with state and federal definitions, and then also some references based on KDHE changes. So again, very minor on this one. And so our recommendation is to set the public hearing for the 6th of April, and to authorize us to publish over the next three weeks in the Derby Informer. I'll gladly stand for any questions on that.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Mr. Labrum? Seeing none, move to set public hearing for April 6, 2022, authorize publication of the notice hearing in the official county newspaper for three consecutive weeks. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll. Oh, I'm back.
Commissioner Howell. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks, by the way, the accommodation to testify on that bill this morning. It was very important. It went very well. I just wanted to commend Mr. Labrum and his staff for doing a great job on this. I take a great interest in building codes, and you and I worked together on this and numerous other codes. I know people get tired of me asking questions and needling little issues around the edges here, but I wanted to say thank you. You guys have done a great job once again, and I think this bill, I'm sorry, this code is ready to go forward for adoption. So I appreciate your good work and your staff's work. I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E, set the public hearing for the adoption of the Cedric County Wastewater Code.
Welcome back, Mr. Labrum.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Chris Labrum, MABCD. Thank you. Again, for the record, Chris Laborum, MABCD, everything that I just said about the sanitary code, and then specifically the wastewater code associated with that is Chapter 23, also Article 5 within that chapter. This code, again, same with admin, KDHE, and definition updates. It also updates our licensing standards and continuing education requirements. It brings them in line with everything else within our building codes that had not been yet completely aligned. It also, we made one change where previously, if we did not receive the maintenance records for onsite wastewater systems that require that, our only course of action was against the property owner. So we can now also take action against the contractor to ensure that we receive those, which is very helpful for both property owners as well as us. And then this also reduces the minimum lot size to three acres for having a lagoon. So we would also request that we set a public hearing for the 6th of April and authorize to publish in the Derbyian Former for the next three weeks.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Laborum? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to comment on the three-acre issue. A long time ago, the requirement was for five acres, and a long time ago, you didn't have to have a holding tank between the residence and the lagoon, but today you do. So any new lagoons, this three-acre allowance is only for new lagoons, they're going to comply with the new code, but have that septic tank between the house and the lagoon. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I guess what that means is there's liquids that evaporate out of the lagoon, but the odors and things like that are not what they used to be. So that's a point. People might think, well, I don't want a lagoon on such a small lot because it's going to be a real problem. I would just simply say, I don't think that's true. The technology is changed by this new configuration requirement. And having said that, again, trying to keep our codes tuned into what's necessary, it's no longer necessary to have such a large lot for that type of configuration. So I wanted to clarify that because some people might question, why would we do this? And again, the technology has changed, and the requirements have changed, and with that new technology and that new requirement, this is no longer a problem. So any comments?
That is absolutely correct.
Welcome to comment because I want to make that clear. Thank you so much.
Yeah. And that is absolutely correct, Commissioner. And this, to further clarify too, the code stipulates three acres and above is authorized. You also could apply for a variance below three acres to potentially put a lagoon on a property, and that's based on exactly what Commissioner Howell just described, the advances in technology. Some two- to three-acre lots will accommodate that. Anything below two acres is not likely to accommodate that.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, I move that we set the public hearing date for April 6, 2022, authorize publication in the official county newspaper for three consecutive weeks.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second in your discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her all.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you, Chris. Next item, please.
Item F, resolution creating a nuisance abatement code in the unincorporated area of Cedric County.
Welcome back, Chris.
All right. Thank you again, Chairman, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Chris Laborum, MABCD, and as stated, this resolution is to create a nuisance abatement code in the unincorporated area of the county. So a little background on this, and to remind everyone that this is, has, and always will remain separate from the existing nuisance code and its definition. So though they relate, the nuisance code is separate from the actual, anything that we would do in abatement. So we did have a Cedric County code allowing a level of abatement that was adopted in 2000. It was used a few times, still sparingly, but in 2012, there was a Kansas Court of Appeals ruling stating that counties in general do not have statutory authority to do self-help abatements. As a result of that, so that was worked by legal for a while, but as a result of that, we eventually, so we suspended any use of that code for some time, and then eventually repealed that code within the county. Shortly after that, it became one of the legislative priorities for a few years to seek a limited authority, the return of authority to do that. Last year, the Kansas Legislature gave us that approval via Senate Bill 52. It is specific to us in Cedric County as an urban area, and it does enable the BOCC to approve abatements, authorizes the BOCC to detail that process for us, and it also sets actually some pretty solid and strict parameters on what we can do there. And then, of course, very important to point out with this, that it ensures and maintains property owner due process throughout that, and that's one reason I emphasize it being separate from the nuisance code. We'll see a little bit more in that, how that process has to continue in its current form in order to support this. Also, as part of our agreement with the legislature, this does include a three-year sunset clause. So in '24, we would need to return and present this again to legislature for it to continue to remain in place. The major components of the code include that it is intended as a tool of last resort. These are in cases where an owner fails or is otherwise able to abate a hazard, and the emphasis there is on something that is truly a hazard, more than just your kind of run-of-the-mill or normal nuisance that we see. It does require that we would bring this to you all and have you declare it a danger and a menace to the health of the citizens of our county. Again, to emphasize that we would follow, and the tenets of the statute as well as the code contain that we follow normal nuisance notification and compliance process. So that would begin, just as we do now, with a letter with a, or a personal visit to inform property owners of the nuisance, giving them, depending on the type of nuisance, anywhere from two weeks to 30 days, which also often includes extensions through our office, especially if folks are making any level of progress. If that process does not result in compliance, it's not successful, then we go to county court. So we would also be required to follow that normal court process, which does also include judges' option to grant extensions and to work with the owner. If then still no success, we would seek a court conviction, and we are required to have a conviction in county court within 12 months of any action that we would take under this code, and this all also assumes that the property remains in violation to that level. So if we still have an unabated hazard, we are still a danger and a menace at that point to the health of the inhabitants of this county. We would proceed with further action, which would be to bring this in front of you as the commission, and seek a declaration of that hazard, and also a declaration to the property owner, ordering them to clean it up. That the code then requires that we serve that notification in person, and that would, of course, establish timelines, et cetera. As part of this code, we'd also establish as an abatement appeals board and a process for that. So kind of an interesting flow in this, and the previous code had that in place, that if a member were to appeal either your decision to the level of their hazard, to the level of their nuisance, or the timeline granted, they could take that to the board. A board is designed to be structured with five members, allowing each of you to nominate and have a member appointed for your district. That board could then determine if that nuisance exists, or they could then provide, they could also provide an extended timeline, et cetera, work with the owner to help with the cleanup. And now, assuming that we do not achieve success through that process, it would then require us to bring this back in front of the BOCC again and receive an order from you all to proceed with the abatement. At that point, then, county staff, or most likely, an authorized contractor would do that abatement for us. In the rare cases, the only time that we abate currently is if we have a situation where insurance proceeds are involved, if a house is damaged beyond repair, normally through fire, possibly through another natural or otherwise, a natural disaster or other event, and the property owner does not clean that up, then we have a portion of the insurance proceeds that we will put towards removing the hazard from that property. When we do that, we put that out to bid with the local contractors who do that sort of work. It's a very quick turn. Within a week or two, we have a bid. We take the low bid, the best bid, et cetera, and move forward. We would assume that that process to remain. So after that abatement is completed, the code stipulates that the owner would be invoiced for the cost of that cleanup, to pay that within 60 days. Any unpaid cost would then be assessed to property taxes. We want to emphasize that there remains an agricultural exemption. So just like with everything else in our zoning and nuisance codes, we do not try to, we do not enforce anything on the agricultural operations of the county. Also, important to emphasize that there is no transfer of property ownership in any way, shape, or form to the county. So this does not have any effect on us trying to go out and get things or property from people. It can have an effect in that if we assess items to taxes, obviously, tax delinquency can result in that going to a tax sale, though that property still would not transfer to the county. It would be put up for sale to those seeking to purchase properties through that. There are also stipulations in the code that if there are vehicles involved, that we would follow state statutes in the disposal of those, vehicles or any other valuable property, we would then have to follow, again, follow those statute rules, and if we were to find those valuable items, however those are disposed of, whether given back to the owner or through our process sold, the owner would receive the proceeds of those. So if by some case we ended up with excess money through something like that on the abatement, that would all be back to the owner. And then, lastly, just as kind of a reminder, I threw up some of the case examples that we had taken to the state legislature to show the level of, again, nuisances that we are targeting with this. We're not trying to just go out and use this as a tool to clean up anything that we think should be taken care of. And the good news story here, too, is that we've been successful so far in the three you will see. So this was an example we used of a very dilapidated house that, though fenced, you can see that it's, would obviously be a very attractive nuisance potentially to youth. It also was not far from a neighborhood, from a populated area. This has actually been taken care of now, so we finally had family members step in and remove this. Here's an example, and this one has also been cleaned up since we looked at it, but this is an example of a case where, again, you've obviously got a situation where there's no way you could secure these structures, could provide a very dangerous situation, and if we can't get fairly quick compliance with this, we may need to seek an order such as this. And then this is another example. These are by far the tamest pictures I had of this one, but it is probably our most extreme case. It's definitely the most extreme case we've had since I've been here. There was some level of environmental cleanup done by KDHE because there was a lot of waste and things with potential groundwater contamination, which would be a huge concern for us. So that was handled, and the good news here is that we've actually had families step in and take care of a great deal of the nuisance on this property. There's still some issues there, but they have certainly got it out of a situation where I would be seeking an abatement order on it. So that's very good news for now, and I say that because even though we haven't put the code in place, people are aware that we gained the authority to do so summer of last year, and we, our actions at that point were to identify the properties that were potential, may require abatement, and to start getting those back, getting cases renewed on those to get them back into court, et cetera. And as you saw there, those three particular cases, I would like to think that helped. I believe it did, to get owners and family of owners into action, and they actually took care of those. So that's the success we're looking for there, as compliance is always our goal. So that concludes what I have for you, Commissioners, on the code. I'll gladly stand for questions. We've got Justin Wagner, who did a lot of work on this over the last few years and wrote the code, who could also assist with questions, and Tim Wagner, who manages our land use division here.
Well, thank you, Chris. The entire board has been involved in this in the beginning. We've included in our legislative agenda a couple of years, and finally, last year, got it across the finish line. A great deal of thanks go to Commissioner Howell, who testified in favor of this bill, and to Chris, who testified in favor of the bill. I was up there when you all were testifying. We've had some criticism in the past as we were trying to push this forward, that we weren't going to follow due process, and what you've just laid out is that every step of the way, due process has been complied with, and it's a fairly lengthy process in order to comply with everything that you've talked about today. In addition, one of the other concerns that we had last year when we were trying to get it across the line was the agricultural operations, and they are exempt. So I think that we've addressed about every concern that I've ever heard on this bill, and it's time that we are able to finally incorporate it. Now, the good news is, maybe, I don't know if the folks are listening, that we're working this, but I had a huge problem in my district, and it's in the process of being cleaned up. Some of the things that you've taken a look at, that you briefed us on today, are being worked, so we appreciate that. I think that this is the right way to go. We're going to have to put it back on our legislative agenda again in two years to make sure that it stays, but for now, I appreciate what all has happened. So we do have a couple of questions. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Chris, thanks for all the work that, and Commissioner Howell and others that have done over the years to get this done. My comment is, the due process is spelled out. I'm very comfortable with that. As we talked in our meeting, I was familiar. Many, many more nuisance violations come in front of the city of Wichita, but I'm comforted that most every one of those, the city council at the time would either agree to let the person have X days, X months to try to fix it, and then they'd come back, and then once in a while, they couldn't fix it, and it just happened to be at the end. So for the public to know that you're going to have a lot of chances to fix any errors that are pointed out in due process, and that eventually, if it gets to the very end, it will come before us for some guidance, and if the commission will be lenient at the time, or allow some more time, or listen to the case, then it's a good process. It's not exactly like the city, but it's a good process that you've spelled out. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, I guess, reflect on a little bit of this bill and this process here. You know, considering counties and cities are both municipalities, but cities have, I would say, pretty strong powers for abatement, and I'm not that familiar with what they can do, but I do know that sometimes they seem to be somewhat aggressive. Cities can do a lot of things that counties cannot do without Senate Bill 52. At that moment, we basically had no powers, and you know, we could actually cite somebody, but the worst thing that would happen would be potentially a $500 fine, and that's the end of that. I mean, we had no way to actually fix anything. If they chose not to fix the problem, it's just a never-ending cycle of citing them, going to county court, and nothing actually ever has to happen. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, you and I have talked a little bit about the number of cases that are out there. You showed me three today. I've not seen those three cases before now, but you know, I think just in my mind, I think this is actually a long process. You did show us kind of a flow chart, maybe just for us to understand what was in this policy, but that flow chart showed, I'm just going to guess, around 20 or so steps, maybe more, 25 steps, 20 steps maybe. I don't know how many steps it is, but quite a few. You count them. I can see you're counting those.
Twenty.
Twenty steps?
Yes.
I call that due process, and along that process, they have to get a citation, they have to basically not respond, they've got to go to county court, they have to get a conviction, they have to not fix the problem, and then, so again, that is due process, first of all, and then it has to go before the elected officials here. We actually have to want to go forward, and they have two appearances before the Board of County Commissioners before we can actually, if you will, order an abatement. At the end of the day, that property will pay for the abatement, and again, this policy even talks about, has to be a competitive bid. So we can't just go in there quickly and do a lot of work on, you know, with county employees and give them a huge bill. That can't happen either. So in the cases in the past where I've seen where governments are somewhat aggressive, I would say this is just the opposite. aggressive, I would say this is just the opposite. One of the challenges that we have is, there's a spectrum. One end of the spectrum is total property rights and no responsibility to do anything because you want to have total freedom on your own property. And the other end of the spectrum is government control and no freedom. And I think what this does, it's very close to the, close to the spectrum, into the spectrum that says you have almost total freedom. But there's a point where health and safety comes in, and after a 24-point process, we can finally step in and fix the health and safety issue. So the due process is certainly built into this. I know some people out there don't like, don't like this, this control, but I think it's such a long and patient process, that I think that for us to get to the end of this process, I may be surprised if we ever get there. I guess we'll have to see how this works out. Maybe we will get there, but there is a possibility, we may, we may never exercise that last step. Because I think what happens is people know that we can do something, it actually causes a little bit of responsibility on their, on their part. And that's what my hope is. My hope is we never have to actually vote to abate something, but I guess we can if we have to. But my hope is we'll solve these problems before we get to that point. I think that's what this does. And so, and again, this is, creates a structure in our county code for what the legislation created for us a couple, actually, it's been, what, more than a year ago at this point? Was it just last year?
Yes, yes, sir, just last year.
Just last year, okay. Well, anyway, so if anybody out there thinks we're being aggressive, I don't think this is aggressive. I think this is a long and patient process, but it is due process, and it does respect the private property owner. So I just want to make those comments because, again, sometimes mischaracterized on what this is. So I think it's important for people to understand, we're not overdoing it, we're simply creating a very, very small opportunity at the very end of a very, very long process. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank, first of all, our lobbyists that helped us push this across, Chris Labrum, Commissioner Howell, the entire Board of County Commissioners, our legal office. There were a lot of people that were involved to get this to the point we are today. So I want to thank them, and I move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Item G, update on COVID-19 vaccine mandate for comm. care and health department employees.
Morning, Sheena.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here to provide an update on our COVID-19 mandatory vaccination policy, which is Policy 4.316. This was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on January 19 of 2022 in result, as a result of the Omnibus Healthcare Staff Vaccination Interim Rule that was issued November 5 of 2021. Again, this was upheld by the federal government when in review, and what we have done is we've put out information to employees, passed the policy, and gave them a FAQ of what they needed to do to be compliant with the policy. As of Monday, February 28, employees must have received their first dose of a multi-dose vaccine, or one dose of a single-dose vaccine, or been approved for an exemption, either religious or a medical exemption. Our current stats of 533 employees, 467 are considered fully vaccinated. Five employees have their first dose, and they are scheduled to have their second dose by April 4 to be compliant with the policy. We have provided 60 exemptions, all of which have been approved, and we have one employee as of this morning that is not compliant with the policy. And I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Just a couple of questions real quickly. This came about as a federal mandate, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that federal mandate would require us, if we didn't comply with it, we would lose how much funding?
It was a little over 11 million, I believe it was 11.8.
Okay. Well, I know both Commissioner Howell and I voted for this regretfully, because we don't agree that we ought to be mandating these. We're not anti-vaccine by any means. I want to make sure everybody knows that we advocate people to get the vaccine, but this came about as a result of the $11 million loss to Sedgwick County. So Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. Mr. Manager, did you see the last dashboard positivity rate? It was around 3%, something yesterday, is that correct?
Commissioner, yes, correct. Commissioner, yes.
I, I'm wondering, you know, in the long term, if we hire somebody in one of these positions that doesn't have a vaccine, the pandemic's behind us. Are we going to continue to have a mandate that this vaccine has to be part of your condition of employment in one of these positions?
Yes, sir, as long as the federal mandate under the Omnibus Act is in place.
Well, just as a reminder, there were five mandates from the federal government, four of which were overturned by the courts. This one survived. But even when that happened, we were really at the peak of this pandemic, I'd say the last peak that we just went through. And since then, our numbers have just fallen off a cliff. I mean, they've gone to the lowest numbers we've had in a very long time. And I cannot imagine that that mandate would even have been made had our numbers been, then, what they are today. This mandate, I guess I'll be advocating on the federal level that we get rid of the CMS mandate entirely, because in the long term, it doesn't make sense. In the middle of a pandemic, someone might make an argument right then that that's a necessary thing, but today and going on in the future, I don't think that that makes any sense. For the one employee that's out of compliance, have they been offered an exemption? They are aware of the exemption, they've been offered the exemption?
Yes, they have.
Okay. And just, I guess, for a reminder, it doesn't require anybody to cite a chapter and verse. They can simply sign the affidavit that they have a religious conviction or whatever about receiving that vaccination, and it doesn't require an explanation. So it's very simple. And so for the 60 folks that have the exemptions, are they going to stay in the workplace and continue doing their normal jobs?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's good. And for the one that's out of compliance, I would urge the management to find a place to put them rather than seeing them terminated. If there's a way we can use them in a, in a position that doesn't require this vaccine, then we need to try to keep our employees if we can. And I would rather see someone move to a different area that doesn't require the vaccine than seeing them walk out the door. So I would ask that to be a goal of our management, to try to keep this one employee. And I have to just say, I'm, I am extremely disappointed that we had to go down this path. I've had people reach out to me that were very upset about this vote, and I'm trying to think about, given an option of two really bad things that you don't want, you have to pick between one of those two really bad things that you don't want, how do you pick? That's what this was. There was no good answer here, and I hated that vote. And I think we, we need to work harder to remove this CMS mandate because it needs to go away. But I'm glad we had the exemptions. I'm glad those folks are still on their jobs and are doing their regular work. And for this one employee, I have concern about them. I hope that they get a position offered to them. And with that, I'll continue to advocate with my federal delegation, and I would do everything they can to get rid of that mandate going forward because it makes no sense at this point. Thank you, Chairman, for the chance to speak.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I as well have buyer's remorse on the last time around on this one, but I was, I'm glad it was only one, and I am reminded that years ago, some of you are not old enough, but the Federal Highway Administration told every state that they had to lower their speed limit to 55 miles an hour, or they would lose federal highway money. And many of the states, especially western states, that had no speed limit, really objected, but they all acquiesced because they were going to, federal government was going to be, be heavy-handed and withhold money. And that's kind of what's happening here. And looking forward, then as the, as the 55 limit disappeared, then other states were free to do whatever they, whatever they did. And so I fully anticipate that right around the corner, as soon as a federal mandate on this vaccination world comes to an end, we'll be notified and we can just eliminate this, like others. And I don't like it either, but 11 and a half million in dollars is pretty important. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I would just also add really fast that beyond the 11 million that we could potentially lose, this could also impact our compliance with ARPA, and we could lose a lot of that money, too. So as we're looking at reasonings why we had to pass this, although I do hope everybody gets vaccinated, that there, it was more than just the 11 million as well. If we look at all of ARPA, that could have been in jeopardy, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just a couple of comments on things that Commissioner Howell brought up. I know we're a little bit better than 3% positivity rate right now, but I've kind of lost faith in our positivity rate because there's so many home testing capability out there. It might be a little bit of an indicator, but I don't know that it's as valid as it was when we had most of the, of the testing going through our MDL and so forth. So there are other ways that we might be able to get a more accurate rate, but as low as it is right now, I don't know that they're worth the money to spend to try and get other ways of getting it. So it's kind of an indicator. I think probably a little bit better indicator of what's happening is our hospitalization rate. That is something that is very easy to monitor. When we were on the call on Monday, Via Christie's hospitalization rate also actually went up. So even though the overall numbers, because Wesley came down, the overall numbers were a little bit lower, Via Christie's were higher. So hospitalization is something that we still need to keep our eye on very closely because of the impact it has on the hospitals, but also it kind of gives us an indication of where the pandemic is at the current time. So I just wanted to point those two things out. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an observation, but let me start off with this. The case numbers have dropped, and hospitalization rates have dropped. In a time where we've seen cold weather, we've seen hot weather, we've seen humid weather, we've seen dry weather, we have seen everything. And I don't know what it is that's causing this to drop off, but my suspicion is that the, that the Omicron has just taken its course. It's, everyone in the entire planet has been exposed to this at this point, and everyone has responded to it, however they're going to respond to it. It's just, it's ran its course. Now, maybe it'll be another variant in the future, I don't know, but there is no, there is no rational explanation to the drop, because it's certainly not distancing, it's because we've seen people, basically have essentially ignored the idea of social distancing. Mask wearing, it's record-level low compliance with mask wearing at this point. Vaccination rates are dismal, practically not anything happening on the vaccination side. And yet, while that was happening, these rates dropped drastically. And my point is this, I, I don't, we don't know the future, but as things today, I think it's time for us to move on. Right now, that dashboard has almost no value. I know you guys, you guys were toying with the idea of going hospital status green, I believe, is that correct? The only reason you didn't do that is because one of the hospitals had a slight uptick. Yet, yet, the entire point of the dashboard, the entire point of government control on any of this was to slow the, slow the, slow the spread and flatten the curve, or whatever terms you wanted to use. We don't have a hospitalization problem today. They're doing pretty, pretty well, I think, and the people are not having a problem today. I think the dashboard's basically ran its, its useful purpose. I guess I would like to ask us to consider taking the dashboard down as a symbol of moving, moving on. It doesn't provide anything for us today. You know, I turn on the news every single day, watch the news because it's part of my job, I like to know what's going on around. And one of the things they talk about every single day is the dashboard numbers. And as interesting as that might be, it's almost giving it more attention than it deserves at this point. I guess I would just argue that taking the dashboard down would probably be a rational thing to do at this point, and if something begins to happen at the hospitals, we can always put it back up again. I wouldn't delete the software, but I don't know that it's actually serving a purpose today. The narrative is that we don't, we don't have a pandemic problem today. That's behind us. Everybody should conclude that now. So dashboard's run its course, also, I think we need to take it now. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't want to belabor the points of my colleagues, but I just want to make one reiteration that I think the board voting unanimously for this mandate shows just how our hands were tied. The budget discussions we had yesterday, if those watching weren't able to watch our budget discussions yesterday, I would encourage you to go back and look. We are facing some pretty big, significant challenges with our budget this year, and so thinking about losing $11 million when we are struggling in multiple ways. And so I just want to make sure that we understand, I don't want mandates, I'm actually really concerned about this one employee. Are we, was this for, remind me, was this for a specific designation of employees, or was this for company-wide?
This is for all employees in comm. care and health divisions.
Okay, so that's.
Departments.
So are we, would it be out of this one employee that's out of compliance? Could we find another position for them to go to? Is that something that we have discussed?
That is not the process for this. The employee is out of compliance with a policy. And so our practice is not to find employees new positions when they're out of compliance with a policy.
If they wanted to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if they wanted to move to a different area of Sedgwick County, would that?
They could apply to transfer. The only times that we assist employees in transfers is if there is an ADA accommodation in place, and that is not the case here.
So they could do that on their own, though, and take their chances to find another position if they were qualified and, and met all expectations of that position? Okay. Okay. Well, I appreciate the comments today. I, I'm glad that this pandemic, although I don't think it's completely behind us, I think it has definitely been showing signs of giving, of lighting up, which I think we could all be relieved of. And so I know that just dealing with this for this long has made us all very tired and ready to move on. So I'm sorry that we had to be here at this point. Mandates are never fun, and I just hope that people understand that the board as a whole, because it was a 5-0 vote, you know, talks really, speaks really loudly to how our hands were tied. So I see Commissioner Howell has a comment. I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it was a 5 to 0 vote. I have, I've had a handful of votes in my, my elected history that I regret, and that was one of them. And let me just point out that that, that policy came out very quickly because that decision by the courts came out very quickly, we had to respond. And so that policy was, was presented to us not long before that vote had to happen. And even while we were discussing that, I went, I went back after the vote, and we got more information about, and I found some things wrong with the policy I didn't care for, and I would have made a motion to reconsider, which I think would be an appropriate motion at that time. I wish I would have voted no. You can't buy my vote for $11 million. I, for me, the right vote was to vote no, and I'm sorry I voted yes. But that was, my opinion, it was a rushed policy, it's a flawed policy, and there are problems with the way it was written. And I had questions at the time, I never got good answers. Essentially, when we rush things like that, bad things happen. And I, again, this is one of the, one of the votes, a handful of votes in my entire elected time, I really regret. That was the wrong vote for me. So you can say I voted yes, and you're right, I did. It was unanimous vote, but I wish I would have voted no. To me, that was the right vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Going back to the dashboard for a minute, I have problems with one portion of it, and that's positivity rate. I think the hospitalization numbers are very important for us to keep track of because of the impact it could have on our entire community if we overwhelm our hospitals, and we keep track of that every week, know exactly where the hospitalizations are at. So I, and as I spoke before, Via Christie's went up. We still have about 100 people in the hospital right now, about half of those are in ICU. We need to, we're the Board of Health, we need to know that information, and if we need to know that information and be transparent, we need to make sure the public knows that kind of information. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I'll just kind of reiterate what you just said, but I do think it's important that as the Board of Health and the Health Department, we are tracking what we can, and our community is still asking for this information, so I think it would be really odd for us to not put it out there when we've been doing so the whole time. And we, I'm very thankful that we're at a lull right now with COVID. I mean, we're all over COVID, and I completely understand that, but it's still here, it's still prevalent in our community, and I think that needs to be a point of clarification. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, there have been different variations of this, and we're likely to see another one. So let's enjoy this time now, and So let's enjoy this time now and try to get as much done as we can county business beyond COVID, but saying it's over is is inaccurate. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. Move to receive and file. We have a motion in a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Sheena. Appreciate the update. Next item, please.
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on February 24, 2022.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts results in three items we bring to you this morning. Our first item is bridge improvements, Project B 507, which involves a replacement of a bridge located on Greenwich Road between 117th and 125th Streets North. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Mies Construction Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $605,088.24. Our second item relates to fuel for Fleet Management. This recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Fleet Fuels LLC, and that's at the rates listed. This will be a contract price for one year with four one-year options to renew. Our final item is the temporary housing for COVID-positive clients, Health Department. And this recommendation is to accept the proposals from Liberty Hospitality LLC, and that's doing business as Quality Suites Airport, and H H M Hospitality LLC, doing business as Coratel Inn and Suites. And this is for a contract period of one year with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So right now, are we using these hotel rooms currently?
We are using, or, let Mr. Tim Kaufman answer that.
Morning, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. We are continuing to house people that cannot safely isolate or quarantine, and so we have a few people in right now.
So if someone, if someone tests negative, but they had a close contact, we're going to give them a week or so in a hotel room?
Probably not under those circumstances. Most of the referrals come from homeless shelters, and so in those situations, we're primarily isolating people rather than quarantining.
Isolation is based on a positive test?
Correct.
So these are folks that have a positive COVID?
Generally, generally, they are. It depends on which shelter they may be living in. Some of the shelters are better able to allow people to quarantine than others. Very low usage. Right now, I think our census is two or three.
So our our minimum obligation to do this is what? What's our, what's our, what's our minimum obligation to do this contract? And what's our, or maximum $730,000 over two years? I don't understand.
The contract would, we would pay $1,000 per month to have access to hotel rooms, then $70 per night, and then an additional $20 cleaning fee after a person leaves that location. For example, if someone were to isolate for five days, that'd be $350, and then $20 for cleaning purposes afterwards. And we can end this contract as soon as the community no longer needs, they're no longer in need. We just need to give them a one-month notice on that.
So if there's no one, if there's no one using these rooms, are still, we still pay $1,000 a month, and that's it?
Correct.
And if we, and you could have as many as 40 people in this for up to two years, potentially?
Potentially. We haven't seen a census like that ever.
Do we have a contract currently in place, or is this something brand new?
The reason that we've got this coming, this contract coming before you now is because of the requirements to spend ARPA funding. And so we have done this in the past without a contract, but now that we're switching to ARPA funding, we're going through the purchasing process.
If we didn't have a contract, could we still use ARPA funding for folks that have these needs?
No. My understanding from Lindsay is that we could not.
That's correct. We have to, the the challenge with ARPA is that everything has to be competitive bid. We, that's the difference between cares and ARPA. So the reason this is coming on a commission vote now is when this crisis hit, and let me remind everyone, a month or so ago, we were being inundated from homeless shelters asking for space. By the time we ran it through a competitive bid process, it's, you know, it's not real nimble. So we have to, we have to go through this. So if we cancel the contract and we want to resurrect it again in September, October, we'll have to go through competitive bid processing, if if the commission chooses to use ARPA funds.
It's just, it just seems like it's a, it's a lot of accommodation, a lot of resource for something that's unlikely to be used unless we just simply use the quarantine idea for people who just need to, you know, if there's, if there's someone out there, it's a homeless person that needs a, you know, that has a quarantine need, then they end up with a, with a hotel room for a week. And I don't know how you really control that because it's, it's a bit of an honor, on your honor system. I mean, there's a lot of people who don't necessarily know, you know, who they've come in contact with that may be positive, COVID positive. It's hard to really know that. So, you know, I've got some concerns about the 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 size of this contract. It's a big contract for two years, up to 40 rooms. Maybe we've got ARPA money, but that's still taxpayer money. I don't, I mean, to me, I wish it wasn't so big. I wish it was a, you know, I wish it was five rooms for one year. That would be up, that would be a better contract. But for 40 rooms for two years, this seems like really big.
Go ahead, Joe. We've made arrangements with Coratel that on the 40 rooms, that if we decide, we have to let them know 10 days ahead of time that we would need the 40 rooms. But the 40 rooms will only be locked in for the number of days we need. So it wouldn't be like we would have to have this for 365 days. So we may say we want Coratel, we cases are high, we need 40 rooms, but we need them for 20 days. And so we would pay the $2,000 per day for 20 days, and then maybe in May, June, July, we pay nothing because we have no need for the rooms. So it's not a commitment to pay the $2,000 per day unless we actually block the rooms and we have the option to discontinue after the number of days we request.
I'll just wrap up my comments and say, if we're not willing to use our own money for something, then we publish it and just be willing to use federal money because it seems like it's not our money. I have concerns about the the way this was done, I guess. I don't, and again, I I have, I don't know. I have to think about this one, but I'm, I'm not real excited with this contract the way it's currently written. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. When we were talking about providing a warm place for folks when the cold snapped hit, I know I received multiple calls from homeless providers. I had the need myself to help one person who actually died in the cold last week. So there are, there is a need, and I think as long as you've lived in Kansas, we all know, I mean, as long as I've lived in Kansas, this weather is very unpredictable. If you want to look at the weather forecast coming up, you know, we have temperatures at night all the way down to 22 in the next week. So when someone is sick and they have no place to go, and our shelters are full because of the weather, whether this contract is perfect or not, I do believe that our staff has done the best they could to get this put in place so when something does happen, citizens aren't dying on the street in the cold because they're sick and because of other reasons. So I'm really kind of sad that it's taken us this long. I know it's not your fault, Joe. I'm not implying that at all. When this happened, it was very disheartening that we had to wait so long just because there were so many people in need. I know Councilwoman Ballard and I both received a ton of calls because we represent the area where a lot of people who are experiencing homelessness. You know, I, if if you were to receive those kinds of calls on a Saturday night at, you know, 8 o'clock, which I did receive and still receive, it is very disheartening to have folks who have no place to go. And with this money, be it federal or not, this is what it's designed to do, and this is what it's intended for. And so I appreciate the fact that we've got this in place now because there will be a need for it. I know it because I receive these calls. And so I'm happy to forward them to any of you so that you can hear the desperation in our, the providers' voices around trying to find a place for human beings to heal should they come, come down with this illness. So thank you so much for this. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Well, Joe can tell you, I called him up and talked to him in finance about this to get more details. I've talked to the manager about it, and not just this, but several other things that are revolved around this. One of my concerns, and mainly at the federal level, not at the local level, but a lot of times, my programs start with all good intentions, and then they never die. They just go on because they just end up in the budget, and they just keep moving. And so I've asked the manager about several things. Do we need to continue the vaccination clinic in the future and keep all those folks when there are a lot of places that can provide the vaccine? Do we need to continue the the testing facility or not? And do we need to continue this program that we're talking about right now? And the manager assured me that we would have a complete briefing on this in the future. This morning, I talked to him again, should I defer this item on the hotel until that point in time? And he told me that if we decide in the future, when we get a complete briefing on all of the different programs that we've put in place, that we could terminate this contract. And Joe has confirmed that. So I feel comfortable that we can move forward with this contract today. But I do want for the entire board to be updated on what all programs that we put in place, because we spend a lot of money in the Health Department and other areas. And which ones do we still need to continue as we move forward, and which ones have kind of outlived their usefulness? We also have another issue coming up we're not even addressing yet today, and it might be a little off the subject, but from what I understand, the M D L is going to stop being funded by the state of Kansas at the end of March, which isn't very far away. What are we going to do at the end of March about testing if the M D L, are we going to pick that up? So there's a lot of things that Tim is going to be talking to us about in the very near future. So, but for today, I feel comfortable with passing this and moving on because we do have some options in the future that we could change our decision-making. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree that there needs to be some homeless resources in this community, but I don't think that's what this is supposed to be. And I, I feel it's a little bit disingenuous to characterize this as a homeless resource. It is a program for anybody, it sounds like, that has a COVID isolation need, so they have a place to go. Mr. Manager, do we have data on how many, can we get data on how many people have actually tested positive or currently using these rooms? Can we look at the last?
We can get your historical data, yes.
Okay. So I don't know how how urgent it is to pass this, but I think lacking some data, I would feel better if we had a little bit of data presented to the Commissioners before we adopted this contract. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I would make, out of respect, I'd like to vote yes on Items 1 and 2, and I'd like to not vote in favor of Item 3 at this time. So I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts for Items 1 and 2.
Second. And we do have some more discussion. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So I guess I just want to say I'm no longer going to allow my words to be minced. Just because I mentioned one segment of the population utilizing these rooms does not say that it is strictly for this population of people. I am advocating for one segment of people. So to say that I have solely said that these rooms were only for homeless people is completely false, and I will not allow that narrative to be placed in the record. And so I'd like to clear that up and make sure that my words aren't minced. And so, thank you, Chairman.
I agree. They're not solely for that. We've put first responders and so forth in these hotel rooms in the past, so I agree with. We have a motion on the floor for Items 1 and 2 of the Boards of Bids and Contracts, and I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And for Item 3, as I've stated before, I feel comfortable voting for that today because we can make changes in the future and move to approve Item 3. We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Joe. We appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Commissioner Dennis. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stoles with County Manager's Office. Recommend approval of consent items I through M Mary.
Thank you. I move that we approve India through Mike, and we will have one comment after, before the vote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second A discussion. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to mention letter I. I did have a conversation with the administrator for Park City, Brent Clark. He, this is actually requested by Valley Center. They are making this request. My request would be that the language that is written here is pretty confusing, a bit windy. I wonder if in the future we could maybe clean it up so that it's not as cumbersome to read, just so that it is kind of clear that this was requested by Valley Center. It kind of seems like we are requiring them to do this when it was their request in the first place. Justin, did you have something to say?
Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. Yes, Commissioner Cruz. I, and I'll communicate with Public Works what you're mentioning. I believe the agenda items title could be modified. Some attracts the language in the statute, which is very verbose, probably overly so. And in some cases, the county can actually force a city to annex. In this case, it's kind of a friendly annexation where both sides are in agreement, so it's not a controversial one, but the language attracts the statute, but it can be summarized into more succinct format.
Sure. I appreciate those comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Good morning, Tanya.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I have a brief update this morning on legislative issues. Last Thursday marked the official halfway point of the 2022 Kansas legislative session with the turnaround deadline by which nonexempt bills must be passed by the originating chamber or be considered lost. The legislature will return on Tuesday for the remainder of the regular session, and each chamber will now take up the bills sent over to them from the other. This morning, we did have a brief recess with Commissioner Howell testifying, and that was on House Bill 2676, which is the bill that Commissioner Howell was able to put forth for us with the legislature, which authorizes counties to create a code inspection and enforcement fund and expands the scope of our equipment reserve fund to include other computer and electronic technologies. So we did have that hearing this morning in the House Local Government with Commissioner Howell testifying. We also had our CFO, Lindsay Poe Rousseau, testifying, and we did have K A C providing written testimony in favor of that bill. And I might just pause and ask Commissioner Howell if you'd like to just say anything on that particular bill.
Well, you know, I, I like to, I like to spitball whether things are going to move forward or not. This bill looks like it's going to move forward, and the committee seemed to be very receptive to the testimony. They seem to understand their, their need for it. I, some comments, I had some text messages from, from our CFO after the hearing, after I stepped away, and it sounds to me like there was numerous positive comments by the members of the committee. So it sounds like this is one of those bills that's likely to move forward. There were two, two technical amendments needed for the bill, which we supported, but that means the bill cannot go on consent calendar. It's got to go on general orders, which makes it slightly more difficult to get out. And since it's coming, coming around after turnaround, it's an exempt bill because it was introduced and fed in state, so it still has, it still has a chance to move forward. But it is, it does have to go on general orders in the House, which is a little bit out of cycle to get over to the Senate in time for a Senate hearing. So, we're running a little bit late on the bill, but it does look like it's going to move forward. And again, this is on our platform. Just, I'm just glad the fact that we have a bill that seems like it's moving forward this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?
Okay, I do have a few more things just to mention. Tim passed on to me this week that the Senate Ways and Means Committee on Human Services added 58.5 million in the State General Fund for an I D D provider rate increase for the next fiscal year. This is also part of our legislative platform for our C D D O services. So, the next step will occur when the full Senate Ways and Means Committee will consider the K Dad's budget recommendation of its subcommittee. So, our C D D O staff will be providing outreach to the Senate Ways and Means Committee in support of approving the recommended 58.5 million in that State General Fund I D D provider rate increase. This week, or excuse me, two weeks ago, we sent out to our division heads and the sheriff the need to update our federal legislative platform. So, we'll be coming to you very shortly to present the 2022 Federal Legislative Platform for Discussion and Commission Vote. So, I'm happy to answer any questions again, and if you need to provide me any direction on legislative issues or get specific information on bills or action.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Tanya, for that update. I don't really have any questions relating to those specific things you just mentioned, but I do wonder, I know the Spark applications were due last week, I wonder if anybody has any updates on that, and will we be updated at any time?
Sure. I think there is a meeting this afternoon, but I'll refer to the manager on that.
I was going to just mention that we have a meeting today and tomorrow, actually, on Spark progress. We've talked about it as a, as a city-county G W P Chamber, W S U group, and it seems like this is just a first step in a process. These subcommittees now, who actually have not even been told how much money they're getting earmarked of the, of the remaining Spark money, will now begin to discern and go through the numerous applications for this funding. And it's unknown whether there's additional steps that will be added later on in the process or not, but we'll keep the commission aware as we hear this. But it's, it's unfolding as we go, and we'll, we'll try to keep current with what's happening with the, with the applications.
Okay, so what applications were submitted? That's the number one question that I ask.
We submitted, for the mental health hospital, we submitted a, a plan for human resource staffing kinds of challenges, and help me out, Tim, or Tanya, there was three?
Crisis.
Crisis?
Oh, and the crisis center, yes.
Okay, and so the meeting that you mentioned, that was today, who was involved in that meeting? What time does it take place, and when will we receive an update?
That is a Zoom call. I think it starts at 2:00 PM, and I think there's many invitations across the state, so we have staff, I'll set through it myself, and we have staff setting through it too, and then we'll give an update on what that is.
Okay. I heard that there was roughly about $20 billion worth of asks for $700 million. Is that kind of what you're hearing, or what are you hearing?
Yes, just an economic development bucket, which has not been identified with a dollar figure of bucket. They have over $10 billion, from what I understand, and that we know that that will be less than $1 billion a bucket, so.
Okay. And then, so, what will be the, the meeting today? Will it sort of clarify, you said, if there are additional steps? And then, is there a final deadline as to when this will, a decision will be made? Has anybody mentioned that?
I have not heard a final deadline, and I've not even heard officially that there's other formal steps. It could be that these subcommittees will make final recommendations at the end of it. So, we just hope to learn by going through the session today and tomorrow, keep aware. I think the state has a commitment to keep people aware of what's going on.
Okay, and then the question around, like double dipping, so say for instance, we've requested monies from the state bucket, we obviously have our own bucket of money. Initially, when we met with our consultants, Whit O'Brien's, that meeting that we had with, with them, they talked about local match and, you know, using some of our funds. So, I guess my question really remains around, you know, we had originally planned to fund crisis ourselves, and now we have been told that we might be able to utilize some of that money for our crisis center. So, if we asked for the whole amount from the state, but they're not, say hypothetically, not going to give us the whole 15, 16 million, how much was the request for?
It was over 16 million.
Okay. So, is there, are there discussions, and perhaps, I'm not able to attend this meeting today at 2:00, I have another one, but will, will that question be asked around, you know, if they're going to fund a portion, can we fund a portion from our funds, and is that double dipping? Those are just some of the questions that I have to.
Let me, I think when, when we're talking about Spark dollars, and I think how the commission ought to view this is, as we go forward with these requests for the county, there's two things that are important to remember. Number one, it's important that we, as a community, are supportive of one another in these asks. That's why when we put in our requests, we had support of City of Wichita, we had support of, of G W P, we had support of the chamber. So, collaboration and communication is very important. That sends a significant message to the state, to the Spark team, that we have a regional support. The second thing is that we, the Spark team, I think, looks for collaboration, and they look for skin in the game. So, if the county and if the commission decides that if Spark funds a piece of that, will the commission use local ARPA dollars or even local dollars, GF dollars, to fund these kinds of things on mental health hospital, the campus, crisis center, all of these things that we come to the table and willing to put skin in the game? I think that's powerful and sends a good message to Spark. So, those are the two things that we should keep in mind as we try to aspire for this money. It is true, we had C I P dollars for crisis, but the crisis center is an applicable allowable expense under Spark, so why not apply for it? And we can then take those dollars, hopefully if Spark would fund that, take those dollars and reinvest those in other things that the county has to push forward with, in our, in our budget challenges. So, I think we keep this all in mind as we go through. We'll ask those questions, and hopefully the information will be put out today during the, during the session, that those will be cleared up.
Okay, thank you for that, Tom.
Any other questions for legislative? I don't see any, thank you, Tanya, I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Any Commissioners have anything from committee reports today? Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to reiterate for the public, last week, we had an on-bunk meeting with both the city and the county. The Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition released a 55-page report. The plan can be found online. Can we put that plan on our website in addition? Maybe on Calm Care's page or some other appropriate page for ease of people finding it? It is pretty detailed. There are a lot of steps, some of the things that Manager Stoltz just mentioned about a hub of services, if you will. I know that that meeting is online, you can go back and watch that meeting, and I would be happy to take any questions around that report. I have been looking at it front and backwards, I know a lot of it by my heart, and I'd be happy to speak with anybody about it. That plan is really robust, it was, has taken a long time for folks to compile all that information, and I would love for you all to know about it, ask questions. I'm available, but it can be found on the mentalhealthandsubstanceabusecoalition.com, which is mentalhealthSA dot, M H S A coalition dot com, or dot org, excuse me, dot org. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? As long as we're talking about the Mental Health Coalition, I, they just increased their membership as, I guess honorary members is what we are. And they just added myself and Councilwoman Tuttle and Councilwoman Ballard to the Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition. So, I did attend my first meeting this week of that. One of the major issues during that meeting is workforce, and it's something that is not just solely their concerns, it's across the board here in Sedge Creek County also. But we do have to start trying to figure out how that we're going to increase the pipeline on folks with the right qualifications, all the way up to doctor's level, master's level, bachelor's level, work release for mental health substance abuse. But same goes for our Calm Care, Crisis Center, and everything else that's going over in Calm Care. So, that was the gist of the discussions this week. So, I just want to let you know that I'm now a member of that, along with Commissioner Cruz. Anything else for committee reports? Commissioner Cruz.
No, I, sorry, I have another.
Nope.
Under other.
Okay.
I jumped the gun.
Very good. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I did receive a request about a burn ban. Do we currently have a burn ban?
Rusty is out, I'll have to check on that, Commissioner, I don't think anybody from Fire is here. We'll check on it, I don't, I don't know.
Normally during the month of March, there are burden bans.
Yeah.
Actually, it's April.
April, is it? Okay.
Well, I just, will we, I know that there was one that went all the way to April 30th. I'm just relaying a question that a constituent asked me, so will we, will you just send me an email about that and I'll get it to that person? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, first of all, I was able to hear the comments of the, of the Chairman at the beginning of the meeting regarding the situation in Ukraine. I just wanted to echo my support for his comments. This is a big deal, and I am, I am, spent a lot of my time thinking about what's going on over there. I wish I could do more, but besides my own prayers, I, I stand with the people of the Ukraine, and I appreciate Chairman Dennis's comments on that situation. Second comment I wanted to make was, I understand that the task force did finally finalize a letter to the DOJ. I have not seen, I've looked for the copy of that letter, I've not received a copy, and I'd like to know what the process is. Are we, are we going to see that as Commissioners? Is that being sent out on behalf of the task force only, or does the Commissioners have anything to do with this? What's the status of that letter? Can we get a copy? Please talk about that, please.
The letter for what?
The task force, the letter to the DOJ. Department of Justice.
Yes, as soon as they finalize, and again, Rusty's not here, but I've talked with Rusty about a weekly update for Commission. I know that, and I'm going to have Tanya go back to the podium, I know that we put things, there is a connector on the website with a running accumulation of what the task force is discussing and accomplishing, but we want to get Commission and Council something separate and distinct from that. So, Tanya, could you talk about that just for a second?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. As Nicole is pulling up the website, Nicole, do you mind going just back just a hair there? Just on our front website. So, for the public, we have, just right there on the, on the front page, we have the Community Task Force, a link there, and then go ahead and click on that link. So, if you scroll down there, everything that is related to the task force and the work that they're doing can be found on this website. So, we have the task force meetings, the agenda is on there, the minute summary is, minutes from the, from every meeting is on there, the summary of those, of those meetings. Anything that is provided to the task force at those meetings are on this website. So, we have that there, and then also, if you can scroll down just a hair there, we also have on there the, the email that you can reach the Community Task Force. It's communitetaskforce@cedric.gov. So, if, if the public is trying to reach the Community Task Force, they can reach them there at that email. And then also, the task force member list is, is also there as well. And then, we will work on, after every meeting, making sure that you get the meeting summary minutes from the, from those meetings. I think that's what the manager was referring to as well.
And just an update, I just, Rusty just texted me, the letter has been approved, and we'll get a copy of that to Commission.
I was going to say, it was in the news that they finalized the work on that letter. So, again, so, you're just receiving a copy? If that's all we're going to do is receive a copy, do we have any role to play here in terms of reviewing that or voting on that in any case? Is this going from the task force directly to the DOJ? Do we have any opportunity to weigh in on anything that's said in that letter?
Of course, the Commission has an opportunity to weigh in. I, I think the Commission, in the special meeting from a week and a half or two weeks ago, basically voted to support the task force ability to submit a letter to DOJ, so I don't know that there's any more role, official role for the county commission to vote or not vote on, but of course, you could comment on it. So.
But how would I do that? I mean, the reason I voted no on that, that vote the other couple of weeks back is because I felt like it was a blank check. We don't know what they're going to say, we don't know how they would represent the county in this. To me, that was undefined, and so now that we have a final copy of their letter, since we essentially, the majority of the B O C C essentially lent, you know, provided support to their, the process of drafting that letter, it seems like maybe there should be a step where it comes back to the B O C C at this point, and it should be some type of review or some type of, you know, agreement that that letter's an appropriate letter from Cedric County. Unless it's being sent out by the task force and it has nothing to do with Cedric County government, that's, that's another way to look at this. I'd just like to have that clarified.
It is being sent out by the task force, this is not being sent out by Cedric County.
So, it's not a statement of the B O C C in any way?
That's correct.
What was that vote for then, a couple of weeks ago?
I, I would have to refer back to the Commissioners that voted, but it was basically to give task force, to support the task force and their ability to send this type of letter.
All right. Now, I've been trying to watch the task force online, some of that's very difficult to hear, and I understand that they are doing recorded votes, but that's, it's not where you can see who's voting, how, how each individual member's voting, and so it's a bit of a, and Mr. Manager, or should I say, Mr. Counselor, are they subject to Kansas Open Meetings Act?
We have considered them to be subject to the Open Meetings Act. It's somewhat of a gray area, but because of the county's influence in helping set up this committee and such, we have taken that position, and, and I think they've been announcing the meetings and giving notice and doing all the other proper things according to the act.
I think they're voting by paper, which was one of my concerns. They're not, they're not, they're not voting by paper?
Are they, are they voting by secret ballot?
No, they, they, we have a software that, that they're voting on.
Okay, how do I review that?
I think we can get the records for that.
Okay. I think they need to be part of the minutes, so I can have access to that, that'd be great. And then in terms of the minutes, I've not been able to find the minutes, so if it's on here, that's great, I just don't know where to find them. I don't know if this includes the minutes from those meetings or not, but I'd like to have those minutes available.
We will get the Commission and the City Council a summary weekly, in addition to what we can find online, or what you, what any citizen can find online.
I'll just make a comment, and that is, we have, some of the problems, I perceive, some of the problems that have caused some of the things that happened in this particular case are legislative. It is, some of the things are related to foster care and D C F and other things. I testified on House Bill 2200, and I, I think that, I think the county and the task force is missing an opportunity. I'll just state that publicly, that House Bill 2200 needs to, needs to have, it is a vehicle to fix some things in our state. If we don't use House Bill 2200, it will be at least a year away before we have another chance. And I think it's unfortunate that we have not had more support for legislative change. And I know, I know they're, they're, they're spending a lot of time doing what they're doing now, but the window of opportunity for legislative solutions is very narrow. And so if you're going to, if you're going to lean forward and use that opportunity, you've got to do it in the window that is available. You can't do it when you have, when you get around to it. So, I am disappointed that the county and that the task force has not used the opportunity for legislative changes that I think are somewhat obvious and need to be made. So, with that, I'll just, that's my comment, and I want to say thank you for the chance to speak, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Chairman. I do have some, some updated good news for the community, but related to what Commissioner Howell just said, I recall that I was specific on that motion. on that motion that said that we support a review of the case. So any, any insinuation that I was supporting an investigation or everything the task force was done is, is not accurate. And I, you can watch it. I wish I had it in front of me because it was a very simple motion and it had the word "review" in it twice. So if others have a comment about that, but I'd like to come back and share some more regional and better information.
Did you want to read it?
No, I can read it again. The motion was, I believe it was from Commissioner Lopez. "I move that the Board of County Commissioner provides a letter to indicate the Board's support for the request from the Sedgwick County Community Task Force to review youth corrections systems standards and for United States Department of Justice to review whether federal crimes involving civil rights violations occurred in the circumstances surrounding the death of Cedric Lofton."
Thank you, Commissioner.
And again, Chairman, all, yeah, thank you for letting me talk. If I can come back on, when this topic is over. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I think it is really important to make the distinction between a review and an investigation. So if the task force did ask for an investigation by the DOJ, which we would need to read the letter to see what they've specifically asked for, then what happens next? Because I do support an investigation and this, I mean, I do support a review. I support an investigation. I support it all. I want to get to the bottom of what happened and make sure this doesn't happen to any other child or any other person in our community. So I'd like to review that. I think there's a lot of things, just for the fact that we as a commission, this body, only supported a review. So that's one point to make. The second point, this Citizens Task Force was set up and explained during a press conference that we would not be meddling in this. This is run by the citizens. It is run by the community. We were facilitating it, but we are not, we are not dictating what they do. We are not mandating anything that they do. And so for us to say as a Commissioner that we want to look it over, I mean, I want to look over the, the letter just to see if it makes the distinction between a review or an investigation. I think that that's because I'd like to make a motion that this Commission supports that letter that talks about an investigation. So that's, I think, a little bit more in line if that is the case, that their letter does represent those, those words. But I think it's important to understand that this task force was told to the community and explained to the community by Commissioner Dennis and by Commissioner Lopez, that this was to be run by the community. And so I support that. And the moment that this Commission starts meddling in what they do, I don't believe that's the best course of action to take because that's not what this community is under the impression that this task force is supposed to be designed for. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We can, great to disagree, but the way this is worded, it seems like it's missing a word. The word is the word "and," A-N-D. Says, "I move that Board of County Commissioners provide a letter to indicate, a letter to indicate the Board's support for the request from the Sedgwick County Community Task Force to review youth corrections systems standards." That's the review. Here's what I'm missing. The word is, I think the missing word is the word "and." "And for the United States Department of Justice to review whether federal crimes involving civil rights violations occurred in the circumstances surrounding the death of Cedric Lofton." I don't know if that was intended or not, but that's the way I, that's the way I interpreted the intent of this motion, which is why I voted no. I support the task force for them to look at the policies and procedures of Sedgwick County as they relate to juvenile justice. I think those are great opportunities for, for improvements in the, especially at the state level. But I don't, I don't think it's necessary to ask the DOJ to do anything because they were involved from the very beginning of this case. The FBI was, was involved in the case from the very beginning. That's, that is synonymous language with DOJ and the US Attorney. So I don't, I don't know that this request, the DOJ take a look at this case, is what this motion is about, is, is appropriate. I did say numerous times that a citizens' grand jury is a tool in the toolbox that they could go after if they wanted to have a independent investigation parallel to the district attorney. I've said it over and over again and for some reason, no one's hearing that, I guess. So anyway, from my perspective, I'm supporting the task force in their review of policies and procedures, especially state legislative issues. I think there are opportunities there, but in terms of a letter to the Department of Justice to investigate Sedgwick County, looking for things wrong, the FBI was involved in this case from the very beginning. It's unnecessary and it's inappropriate. So with that, I voted no. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Can I have my copy back? Thank you. Commissioner Meister, did you have anything else you wanted to add under other?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Of interest to the public usually is any news that's, that's worthy related to the further development of the Amtrak extension from the Dallas-Fort Worth, Oklahoma City, up through Wichita to Newton and beyond. So with that, Oklahoma Senator Inhofe and the Ponca City officials that I've worked with closely in the past, there is, FRA is, Federal Rail Administration is seeking final comments before they make their final ruling on the applications for this. And so there's a link that they have provided for comments. I think it's mainly for states and, and investing parties to comment on the final rules, but it, it does allow public comment. So that is available until like March 9th, I believe. But as important is, Amtrak officials are going to be in the state of Kansas next week. And they have invited myself and Commissioner Dennis for a meeting next Tuesday at noon. And it's not open to the public, but we will have some pretty serious updates from Amtrak, where we're at today and what's right around the corner with the FRA applications and KDOT officials. So more, more to stand by. We can report on next Commission meeting, but it's, we're taking some pretty positive steps right now in the world of Amtrak connectivity. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
So we have all received this letter now that has been finalized. This letter has been finalized?
I believe, I believe the task force did, yes.
So the letter I'm referencing, which I'm just going to read, Community Task Force to Review Youth Corrections Systems Standards, it is dated February 28th. It is directed to Merrick Garland, the United States Attorney General. It says, "Request for the Department of Justice to conduct a pattern and practice investigation into Kansas Department of Children and Families, Wichita Police Department and Juvenile Intake Assessment Center relating to the existing system standard and performance, law enforcement, foster care policies, mental and behavioral health training resources, standards and use of force for civil rights violations, including but not limited to the death of Cedric Lofton." So I won't read the whole thing, but this does ask for an investigation. So does that mean that what the, I mean, because this Commission supported a review, we supported a review to go along with this letter to the Department of Justice. But now that the language has turned into an investigation, what happens next?
Well, I, I think that the task force has independence. And I think that's what the Commission and the Council supported at the beginning of the, the concept of the task force was to give them room to go in and ask questions, look at policy and, and the whole issue. And including if they, if they, the task force, decided that a letter needed to go to DOJ, that they had the ability to write the letter and that the Commission and the Council supported that. And I think that's what they've done. And if it goes to the DOJ, I, I do agree that DOJ, with Commissioner Howell to some degree, DOJ has been involved in this from day one. But if the task force felt it important that they send separately a letter, I think that we supported that. And I think that they ought to have the ability to do that. I think we get hemmed up too much on the semantics of investigation versus review. A DOJ review, those are, those words mean to some degree the same thing. They have the ability at any time, DOJ has the ability at any time to look at any matter and review and investigate. That's what they do. The task force tangibly putting that on paper now and sending that, I think is the role of the task force. I don't know that, unless I'm missing something from legal, I don't know that the Commission has to take any further action on this issue.
So I guess the, the conversation that I had once, because there was some confusion around review versus investigation. I had a pretty lengthy conversation with our sheriff and he was very adamant about the distinction between the two. And so I hear you say conflicting words that they're one in the same, but that's not what I heard from our sheriff. So I guess, I just want to be clear that, you know, this, whether we're going to send a letter alongside this saying that we support them, which is what I believe that we agreed to. Am I, am I incorrect?
We agreed to a review.
So we, we agreed to a review, but was that going to be a letter that we'd send along with this?
That's something that has not been determined yet. We have not voted on anything like that. Today is not the appropriate time to vote on that because we just got this about two minutes ago.
Okay. Well, when is the appropriate time to, to talk about this then?
It would have to be at a future meeting when we've all had a chance to digest exactly what's going on. We haven't even read the minutes.
Okay, Chairman. Well, I appreciate that. I would like to request that this is on our next meeting then. And we, so that we will have time to read the minutes. Would that be appropriate in your mind?
At a future meeting, correct.
Okay. Well, I would like to request as a Commissioner from this bench, that it's on the next meeting.
At a future meeting, we will put it on.
Okay. Well, I am making a request. I guess if you disagree, that's fine, but I'm making a request to put it on the next meeting. I think it's timely and important to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else need to come up before other?
Just real quickly, Chairman Ilor Foshu, our 911 director texted me, there is no burn ban. The burn ban starts April 1. We are not currently in a burn ban in Sedgwick County.
We're not currently in what?
A burn ban.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Well, one other thing before we go off of other, I want to remind all the five Commissioners that we did get a letter, an email from Karen Bailey saying that we have to sign one of the items on the Valley Center vote that we took today before we leave today because they have to be submitted in a timely manner. So please do not leave until you've signed all the documents that we have as a result of this meeting. Finally, I appreciate everyone's support on what's going on in Ukraine. Our hearts are out to the people of Ukraine currently. They will be in my prayers. I want to just assure all of the Ukrainians that are in Kansas, especially in Sedgwick County, that we support them. I had the opportunity to work over there for three years. Granted, it was a number of years ago, but they are just exactly like you and I. And Ukraine is a breadbasket of their country. So they're used to growing wheat. They grow a lot of sunflowers also. It's one of their major crops over there. But what's going on over in Ukraine right now is absolutely tragic. They are some of the finest people that I've ever met and they're no different than our Kansans. They are great. So please keep them in your thoughts. Madam Clerk, we do not have an executive session today. Anything else need to come before the Board? See, nothing more adjourned. Thank you all.